More Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Seeing no citizens in the council chambers tonight, I think we've satisfied this element of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the October 4, 2016 meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any discussion, proposals to amend or revise? There being none, all in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? There are none. Thereby, the minutes are approved. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is, okay. Did you want to render citizen comment?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to back up to the citizen comment portion of the agenda.
You got past that or no?
No, well, actually, we did, but I'm going to back into it. You are welcome to render comment at this podium on our left and your right. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Sean Martin with the Rental Housing Association of Washington. Have seen some stuff kind of going back and forth with the Planning Commission, Arch. We've been involved in the process there and some other east side cities where this issue's come up with the Section 8 voucher is kind of a part of the package that's sort of being shopped around and recommendations for increasing access to affordable housing, basically. So Rental Housing Association, just real quick, we have about 5,100 members. Most of those folks are small landlords, small independent landlords. They own about 10 units or less. And a lot of our folks participate in the Section 8 program, but a lot don't. And the reason for that is it doesn't work for everyone's business model. And so our concern here is that there's a consideration to mandate Section 8 as a protected class in the city of Kenmore. We've seen some other cities enact this legislation and usually it's in response to one or two examples that are seen in the media with properties that usually are large apartment complexes and they have kind of national policies, management changes and things like this where they've determined that they don't want to accept the voucher. For our members, we would prefer to keep that as a voluntary program for the reason that it is federally funded program and at the federal level, it's voluntary. The reason for that, beyond just the voucher holder itself, is really not about the person, it's about the program. And for a lot of our folks, they go into the business side of things and look at things like mandatory inspections annually. It can be a costly process. In some cases, you might have a tenant come in. It's actually one of our board members who rents to a Section 8 tenant. They'd been in there for a couple of years and the third year came up to renew and it came time for the inspection as a part of that and they found that there was some paint on a fence that was peeling on a lot line. And because the property is built before 1978, they looked at that and said, "We're going to need you to make sure that this is not lead paint. You're going to have to abate it and go through all these steps and hurdles that you would not encounter in a normal landlord-tenant situation." Ended up costing him thousands of dollars, about a month and a half process. The housing authority held the payment for that period of time while they were waiting to see that it was rectified. And so that's a situation that some owners can afford to handle. They can be in, they have a business model that suits a situation that might come up like that, but for a lot of folks, it's just not something that realistically that they can work with. And so we support a lot of other programs. We definitely encourage the city of Kenmore to look at landlord liaison program as a kind of an alternative approach where it is still reaching folks that are voucher holders. They have impediments to getting into housing easily where whether it's criminal record issues or lack of income, those kind of things. The program provides a backing for the tenant in the form of a deposit and also damage mitigation funds as well if there are issues at the time of move out. So that's something we work very closely with the YWCA, strongly support that program and would definitely encourage, you know, other areas to get involved with those kind of programs moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Are you able to stick around a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know this is on the agenda, we've got some materials about it and I thought maybe there might be some questions that you could answer.
Sure.
Appreciate it. All right. There being no one else in the chambers to render citizen comment, we will now move on, consider that satisfied and move on to, having approved the minutes, the next item on the agenda, which is the Housing Strategy Plan. And I invite to the presentation table the staff and their consultants.
This evening, our goal is to continue going through the matrix of strategies, hoping to determine whether the remaining strategies are intriguing or not intriguing or somewhat intriguing. You'll see that in this week's materials, Arch tried to summarize the decisions to date. Again, we're not prioritizing at this point, but just setting out a preliminary level of interest and we'll talk about some criteria for prioritizing later on the agenda for the evening. But the goal for this first part is just to continue going through the matrix. I'm going to do my best here. As you can see, Mike is here, but Arthur is not, so I'm going to kind of wing it.
Is he unable to make it tonight?
We do not know.
Yeah.
We do not know.
So he may show up?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct. So I'm going to call up the matrix so those in the audience can see it. So again, over the last few meetings, you have looked at this and you'll see now there's a new column here about your initial reaction to the strategy. And so we would probably start by saying, were there any of these categorizations that didn't match your recollection of how to approach these strategies?
So we've got a piece of one page on the screen.
Right. So it was attachment A in your packet.
Right. Waiting for it to load.
And so again, we certainly are not going through these again, but the question is, did any jump out at you? And we can, if not, we'll just move on to the next section.
I may have had a few questions. First, let me ask if any other commissioners had any questions about how these were designated? I saw, Lori, that some of the categories were not checked as for an initial reaction. Have we not covered everything yet? Mark, can I look at yours? Thanks.
So maybe you're referring to some that were grouped together?
Okay. But point us to what you're thinking of. So I'm looking at Section C, regional and statewide initiatives. Maybe we haven't gotten the--
Right. No, we haven't. That's what we're going to cover tonight.
Okay. And I'm going to run through some of these others still. Okay.
All right. So we are moving on here. Again, we discussed regulatory approaches. The shaded section, again, is direct assistance. That's something that we'll review with the city council.
Okay.
But the next section under B is indirect assistance. So this actually is a category that we will go through. And again, the reaction is intriguing, not intriguing, or maybe we've already accomplished something in this area, so it's something we just want to watch.
Okay.
So the first one of indirect assistance is to--
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Apologize. Because I know Sean is here and rather than go through all this, maybe we could take advantage of him being here without him having to wait for us to go through the rest of this list, which I don't think will involve him that much.
Right.
But he came here tonight and he responded to the materials we received in attachment C, I think.
Correct.
Okay. So I thought maybe while he's here, we could go through attachment C and I think it addressed the proposal from Arch that we adopt Section 8 as protected class against discrimination.
Right.
We had a number of questions. Go ahead.
Yeah. I want to make clear that Arch was not suggesting that you adopt that. What Arch was saying is, is that an intriguing strategy? So again--
Better put.
If you could very well put it on the strategy plan if you--
Right.
Didn't prioritize it or when we got to the point of considering it, you could make a completely different recommendation.
You are correct. I should have said intriguing. So we did have a number of questions about that and I'll say that I had some from my professional experience, clients who'd had some difficulty with this program. And so we had asked, I had asked for a couple of things. I think somebody else asked for some information too. I had asked for a copy of the amendment that Section 8 requires a part of every lease that a Section 8 recipient enters into. And I didn't see that in attachment C. And I think I'd also asked, in fact, Arthur had volunteered to provide us with the letter that it may have been the Rental Housing Association or another agency had submitted to the city of Redmond when they were considering this. Is that right?
Right. I think that is this third attachment. These are comments from the Rental Housing Association.
I was hoping we could get the letter itself.
Okay. We can certainly--
I had the sense that he had that or could get it.
It was from the rental association, I guess at the time that the Section 8 discussion was occurring in the city of Redmond. Correct?
Okay. That is right.
Okay.
And then I think somebody had asked, how many Section 8 voucher recipients are there in Kenmore now? And I did get an answer on that. I don't know if I brought the data with me, but it's just about 100. 100? Okay. Thanks. Has, have there been any complaints about landlords not accepting Section 8 recipients in Kenmore?
Not that I know of. I put a request into the county office of civil rights to see if there have been any complaints of any kind about discrimination toward renters and I haven't gotten a response yet.
Okay. If other commissioners are willing, I was hoping that maybe Mr. Martin could answer a few questions about this related to the ones we'd raised before. So, Mr. Martin, if you're willing to come back up to the podium?
Sure.
I had a couple and maybe some other commissioners might also have questions too. So I had mentioned at our last meeting that, and I've made clear that I'm an attorney and my practice is real estate and I represent a lot of landlords and I think they're the kind of people that make up your trade group as members.
Yeah.
Small landlords.
Yeah.
A lot of times, these are people who bought a house when they were just starting out and they then, you know, they were married, they bought a house, they had a child, they decided we need a bigger house because of the child or they wanted to move to a different school district. And they were able to save the money to put down the down payment on the second home without having to sell their first home. And they would say, "Okay, well, we're going to keep our first home as a rental property." So they, you know, live in some other area now, they have a rental property and then they have to live up to a lot of these new laws like Section 8 housing. So it's not like the apartment complex owner that I think Redmond had. It was a national apartment complex owner and they owned thousands of units and they had a statewide policy or a national policy.
Yeah, exactly. They had a higher level--
Right.
Of looking at stuff versus getting down.
Right. They have a lot more turnover, they have more margin for economies of scale.
Correct.
I call my clients, a lot of them are mom and pop landlords, I guess.
Yeah.
So they've, my understanding is from some of these clients that when they have a tenant who approaches them and says, "Hey, I've qualified now for a Section 8 voucher," the upside is, great, we get guaranteed rent, at least part of it, from Section 8. So it struck me as odd that a city would have to pass a law to require landlords to accept these tenants when there's this financial bonus that comes with these tenants. And one of the things I learned was, well, when we do this, we lose control, a lot of control over a property. One of the ways we lose control is that Section 8 requires us to accept an amendment to our lease that has all these terms, these new terms, like the inspection requirement, the annual inspection requirement that you mentioned, and they're not negotiable. So when rent goes up, we have to get Section 8's approval of that rent increase and they get to decide if it's too high or not right or something like that. I think there might be some other requirements and that's why I had asked Arch if we can get a copy of that. And I don't know if you're familiar with it, but if you are, I'd hope you could shed some light on that.
Yeah, the program in general?
Well, the amendment to the lease that landlords are required to make part of their other, their own lease.
Right. That's right. So there is the, it's a one-year term that's required and certainly as an owner, you know, upfront, whatever you're offering is what you're offering. You're not obligated to change that to a one-year term to match the person with the voucher that's coming to you to see if your unit is available. But with that, there are the requirements for an annual inspection, there are the rules around rent increases. You have to essentially get permission from the housing authority to bump the rent and they're going to look at either, if it's a multifamily structure, comps, which can be problematic for some folks. I've heard from some of our members who have certain units where they've had a tenant for, you know, 10-plus years and it's a, you know, an old widow kind of thing and they give them a break on the rent in consideration of their own, you know, fixed income, they've been there a long time and they know that they're going to take really good care of the unit. If a Section 8 voucher holder is a tenant in another unit, the housing authority is going to look to that lowest rent amount that's in the building and they'll say, "You can't increase the rent because this person's not paying." And so you either end up having to terminate the tenancy of that voucher holder at the end of the agreement and say, "Sorry, I can't renew," or bump the rent on the other person to get whatever the market rate is that you're asking for for the voucher holder. So those can create some problems, yeah.
The one-year lease, so let's say a landlord says, "Well, I've got, well, I want to, I don't want to take the one-year lease requirement. I want it leased to you for six months or month-to-month or something like that." Does that create a problem? Do they have that flexibility?
The housing authorities require a one-year agreement. So as an owner, you know, a lot of people try to time their vacancies with the peaks in the market and so you'll see, especially if you get into the winter months here, you know, November, December, you'll start to see people that are saying seven, eight, eight month lease, nine month lease, that kind of thing to get into the summer months. They can't, they're not obligated to change that term to a one-year agreement to fit for the housing authority and the voucher and that person with the voucher is not able to be flexible and do that seven-month agreement. It's a one-year term or nothing.
So if you're, it's like December, you got a vacancy and you get a Section 8 and it comes to you and says, "Hey, I qualified. You've got to do a one-year lease with me."
Mm-hmm.
That means the lease would expire in December.
Right.
And it might be difficult to fill the unit during the holidays. Is that right?
Yeah. Well, yeah. I think it kind of goes without saying that it's a little slower in the wintertime and it's not anecdotal. You know, we have a tenant screening service that we provide our members and the numbers are, you know, half or less of what they are in the summer. So it's definitely a tougher market in the winter.
They may have to suffer some period of vacancy to order to satisfy that one-year requirement.
Yeah.
And if they say, "Well, I don't want to do this anymore," does that create problems for the landlord? Plus, if they had this Section 8 tenant for a while and they said, "You know what? I'd rather go with a month-to-month lease with a different tenant or change the rent higher than what you're telling me I can charge." Can they just end the--
Upon expiration, generally, it's not an absolute that you're locked into that person. It's not like a in-perpetuity kind of annually renewing thing. There are, you know, like if there were the need for a rent increase, that could be an issue at that point in time. The owner could just choose to not renew the agreement if they wanted to, certainly as well. The difficulty that you get into in that situation is if it's a mandated protected class, is the perception that they were not renewed because they're a voucher holder or is there some other reason? And then you get into kind of that litigation issue.
Right. So the local discrimination enforcement agencies, which in King County--
Right.
King County Office of Civil Rights, is that right?
Yeah.
Could decide, "Well, you're just basing, you're just using that as an excuse to get rid of this protected tenant."
Yeah. That could be a potential--
So we're going to file a lawsuit against you for discrimination.
Right.
Okay. So that puts a lot of pressure on the landlord to, before they can just simply decide, you know, "I don't like this tenant" or "I'd rather go six months" or "I'd rather charge more rent than they'd like, but I face the risk of litigation if I do that."
It's, yes, that is a possibility, yeah.
All right. Any other questions on this? Go ahead, Mike.
Just a couple. First, I'll be interested to hear what Mike and Arch find out about discrimination in Kenmore. That sort of speaks to whether, you know, there is a problem in our city specifically. My other question, Sean, and apologize if you already said, is how many of your 50, I think you said 5,100 members currently accept Section 8 vouchers?
We haven't polled them exclusively. You know, anecdotally, I can say that there are a number of our members that do. We have a resource desk that takes roughly 500 calls and another 300 or so emails from our members every month and it's not uncommon. We have three of our, two or three, I think three of our board members who specialize in providing housing for Section 8 applicants and actually our vice president of the board has exclusively rents the Section 8 program. Because for him, it works. He loves the guaranteed voucher every month. He knows that the rent's going to be paid. He's never going to have to worry about an eviction for failure to pay rent. So that cuts some of the risk out for him. And there are a lot of other folks, but I don't, the exact number, I couldn't tell you.
Right. Okay. Would you say it's a minority, majority, slight majority, slight minority? I mean, even anecdotally, just trying to--
I would say it's probably, as far as who have taken it at some point in time, it's probably about 50/50.
Okay.
A lot of that can be determined by, you know, the jurisdiction. Two-thirds of our members are in the city of Seattle and we have the bulk of our membership and the remaining areas in King County. So Seattle, it is a protected mandated class, a little bit different climate there.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Anybody else? I was wondering, I know that there are now, well, Arch has told us, I think there are four cities that now make Section 8 a protected class.
In King County.
In King County.
Yeah. Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Seattle.
And unincorporated.
And unincorporated in King County.
Which is not a city, but--
Correct.
So are there any cities that have considered this and said, "No, thanks"?
You know, this has come up. So I have been at RHA from out of college to now for about 11 years and this is the third city where this has come up at that point in time. It's been Kirkland and Redmond have been the only two where I've seen it on an agenda for any kind of consideration or anything like that.
But Arch had told us that the state legislator considered this as a statewide law. Is that right?
That's correct. So the state legislature, this has been, source of income has been an ongoing issue in Olympia for, I would say, the bulk of 10 years by now. And that bill has never moved out of the legislature. Primarily the reasons I express in public comment, which is the consideration of the different business models and not everyone is a, you know, larger apartment owner.
Right. Have you seen the attachment C that was sent to us?
Yes.
Right.
The charts and the letter and--
Well, it's hard. It's a--
It's the comments.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wrote them, so--
You wrote those comments and then--
To Redmond.
King County Housing Authority responded. They included their--
Yeah. I didn't see the response previously.
Okay.
That was after the fact.
Is there a chance you might take, not tonight, but maybe before the next meeting, take a look at their comments and give us your thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great. Lori?
Again, I want to remind the commission that what we're doing here is determining whether you want it on the list or want to give it a higher or lower priority. So I really hesitate to have you get into the discussion of whether this is something that you want, you like or you don't like. That's really not what we're doing here and we do have quite a full agenda for the next few meetings.
Okay.
So I just want to point that out.
Thanks. It seemed to me that if we already had comments on one side, it might be helpful to get the RHA's response to that.
I understand that, but, and that's very helpful, but I don't know that you're debating the issue itself, but deciding whether you think it's worth further consideration.
Right. So do we want to talk about whether it's worth further consideration at this point? If it's not, then we don't need to put Mr. Martin to the trouble, I guess. Comments?
Well, I--
This is the intrigue threshold again.
I mean, I've heard enough. I mean, I've got an education tonight on it.
Okay.
It's, you know, I'm not really for it.
Right.
So does that mean it has no intrigue?
Well, that's the thing. I was going to take a poll and like we have with the other issues and decide, okay, are we intrigued enough to give it further consideration or have we already decided based on? And that was my hope tonight, is that we could flush it out a little bit because RHA's representative is here and I don't know, we can expect him to show up every time we talk about it. So maybe tonight would be a good time to--
Actually, it probably would. I'm kind of confused because if we're talking about it, we're intrigued about it, that means we were interested in it and I don't think--
Right. Do you want to know more, is I guess what we're getting at?
Sorry?
Do you want to know more? Should we further pursue this? Go ahead, Mike.
I think the term intrigue maybe is a little misleading. I think about this, just how high a priority would this be on my list? And for me, it would be low.
Okay.
Low.
Low. Low for me too. And that's partly based on my experience as well. That's what we've heard and read, but is anybody else?
Can I ask a question about--
Oh, absolutely.
Why you think it is a lower priority rather than adding this to something that the city might consider as an indirect way to help people afford housing in Kenmore?
For the, mostly for the reasons that Mr. Martin had said and the experience my clients have had with it. So I see this as this, the key goal in the private sector, and that's our charge here, is not to come up with ways to subsidize housing, is to come up with ways that might encourage market participants. And that would be investors, builders, landlords to invest in Kenmore to create more supply because I think there's little dispute that there's a great imbalance between supply of housing and demand for housing. So the things that we can do that increase supply, and that would include attracting landlord rental property investors to Kenmore, would reduce that imbalance and put less pressure on rents going up. So this is a program that landlords, and I can see why, have some objections to. Doesn't mean they can't do it. They could do it if it works for them. As Mr. Martin pointed out, there's some landlords who love it, but there's some landlords who can't afford it because it imposes some costs and risks. So it seems to me giving them the choice is a better policy for encouraging investment in Kenmore and housing, which would have the effect of reducing the price and making it more affordable.
I agree with that and the one-year mandated lease, I don't like that. I think landlords should have flexibility if they want to do a six-month or for whatever reason that they want. You know, they may have some plans for it, move a kid in there or something like that and that takes it away from them.
Yeah. My concern is if we've got somebody who wants to invest in rental housing, I think there are a lot of people who do right now because rents are going up generally. And they have a choice between Kenmore and Bothell or Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, Kenmore and other areas. They'd go, "I'd go with the other area than Kenmore if they've got this requirement and I don't get the choice and the control that I would otherwise have." But that's me. Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah. I would only just kind of reiterate what I said at the beginning, that is, we still don't have data on if there is any case of discrimination, if this is a problem within Kenmore. So that's my only caveat.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, if or when that data might be available. To me, that would make a difference in even what order I would, you know, prioritize in intriguing or not, so. So I guess that makes me in the minority, it sounds like, in this discussion.
That's right.
But that's my view.
Yeah. Carol?
I also think that we don't want to create a problem. I feel like fair housing market rates are not going to stay very stable in this region rates are not going to stay very stable in this region. If you just look at the last trending, maybe three to five years. So if we're being responsible as city leaders to recommend, what does the city want to do to participate in affordable housing? Obviously, Section 8 is a partnering with the federal government to make that available. And to me, that's like creating more of a problem if there's not, I realize it's voluntary, but once the landlord volunteers his space, then they are beholden to the federal government, not our local laws. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are additional requirements under, it's a HAP agreement. But yes, there are, the example with the lead paint would be, at that point, you're not only signed to the agreement, but the inspection ties you into so many more layers that, you know, lead paint is obviously an issue that's required of landlords to inform tenants of a risk and say, here are the ways to avoid it and those things. But it does take it a step further when you're in that agreement, where you now have to actually remediate something. And that's just one example. There are a lot of others. And then that adds, you know, 200 pages of federal requirements of how to remediate and things like that.
Since we're still discussing, you know, what are priorities in even adding these items to the matrix that we're working on, would you be a resource that we could call back at a future date?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I looked through this today, and having been at the previous meeting where there was a task, task force kind of stakeholder group brought together, and builders, realtors, all of these housing, nonprofit housing providers, everyone. There are a lot of things on the list that we're totally behind and are advocating for, you know, accessory dwelling units. I see some other policy stuff about tax exemption, either the multifamily or for existing property, which was something that kind of got off the ground in the legislature last year, and we're hoping to take a little bit further this coming year. So we would love to participate, absolutely.
Thanks. Is Dennis on the phone?
Dennis is on the phone.
Yeah. Dennis, do you want to, have you been following this?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I have this phone.
What's your feeling on further review and examination of this proposal, of this, yeah, I call it a proposal, I guess, for mandating Section 8 housing vouchers as a protected class against discrimination?
I am not supporting.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is definitely a majority of the commission that would say this is not intriguing. So what I'm going to do is change number 2D, which was to consider an ordinance to prohibit housing choice voucher discrimination, from intriguing with questions to not intriguing. Does that?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah?
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Martin or the staff on this? Can I, one more thing while I've got you here, because I'm now thinking outside the Section 8 issue, but as you're here, we're getting a lot of proposals or suggestions. I guess I'm going to call them proposals to consider regarding density, and it seems they overlap, a lot of them do.
Yeah.
But they seem attractive as a market solution to affordable housing.
Yeah.
They give developers, builders, investors, return on, a higher return on investment with more acres per unit, for more units per acre. Is that consistent with your trade group's position?
Yeah, and so that it's, that's a very wonky subject, and it can get really technical.
You don't need to go on and on.
But not, yeah, I mean, you know, Seattle's Hala obviously has some of this stuff in different capacities that's, you know, agreed to in there. But yeah, I mean, generally speaking, we are very supportive of that as a concept to keep people closer to transit. You know, density in general helps with affordability, and so we're very supportive.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. Thanks so much for coming to me.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for giving me the public comment period after I walked in there. Appreciate it.
It's all right. Thanks. All right, Lori, thanks for your patience on that.
All right. So back to indirect assistance. It has, as you can see, several items underneath it, and so you can consider it intriguing or worthy of more exploration. So number A, support applications by housing developers for capital and operating assistance of local affordable housing projects. So I assume by this we mean being supportive in applications.
Right. This could take some different forms, I suppose, but the most fundamental form is for the city to write a letter in support of an applicant who is applying for funding at a state or county level. So it's kind of a formal part of the process.
Write a letter for assistance. The letter goes to?
A letter saying that the city supports such-and-such nonprofits' application for funding on the project that they're proposing.
So the nonprofits looking for funding to build affordable housing from agencies that grants, things like that?
Right.
Okay.
And if the city doesn't write a letter of support for that project, then it kind of suggests that the city's not crazy about it.
Okay. Go ahead. All right. Okay. Any other questions? So we have intrigued.
I'm intrigued. I did read about a project in Everett where the city of Everett backed a private nonprofit, well, I guess it's a nonprofit housing project. There is some major opposition to it in the neighborhood that they're going into. But because they have the backing of the city as a way to mitigate the homeless situation and create affordable housing, it'll probably happen. So neighbors have to adjust. But I went up and looked at the project property the other day, just to get a feel for, you know, what the city of Everett is trying to do to kind of head off some of the problems that they've had. And they're a bigger city than we are. But I would be very intrigued to see the city get behind any kind of an organization that would be willing to do some capital funding on a project like that.
Thanks, Carol. I'm intrigued.
Yeah, I'm intrigued, especially to the extent, I guess, the city's support has carries, it sounds like it carries weight in the process, so I'm intrigued.
All right. The next one, information.
I'm going to add one comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
We're just going to keep slowing you down. I know you. I was going to say, I am intrigued by this, maybe looking at it just a little bit differently. I like the idea that the city would actually evaluate a proposal, and done at the city level, you get to the point of making a city-wide evaluation about whether there's value to this or not. So I kind of like that idea, bringing it up as part of an overall evaluation.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. We can go for Dennis, but we've got five already, so I think that pushes it into the move forward category.
Okay. B, information to seniors regarding housing options, for example, the Arch website or other efforts. So I guess it's posting information to seniors, making it available to them.
Mike, do you want to add something?
Well, if you have time to take a look at the Arch website and follow the links to the senior housing options section, so that maybe many of you have, there's a lot of stuff there. And we've also put it into print form, and I imagine we've made it available to the city before, but I think what's meant here is to, you know, to have a little bit more connection through the city directly to Kenmore residents.
Thanks, Mike. Questions? Threshold? Let's go on this end, Mike.
Moderately interested. My concern here is I wouldn't want to see the city of Kenmore getting into, I'll just say, the business of social service development here. Yeah, you want to put something on the website, put some information available, fine. But there is a way for this, over time, to creep into a much more proactive sort of effort. And I'm not sure that I, I'd have to hear a lot more about that to be sure that's not what we're doing. I don't think that's, Kenmore wants to be or needs to be in that kind of business at this point. There are other agencies out there that already do this and are better equipped to do it, rather than trying to duplicate that effort in Kenmore.
Thanks, Mike. Vice chairman?
I think information has a lot of value. I don't know that I'm skeptical. I'm just wondering if this is, does the city currently provide, you know, such information? You said Arch does, and you sometimes work with cities. I mean, is this not getting out there to the seniors in the community at this point, or is this a new need, or, and could it be done in the context of other types of information providing that's, you know, part of our, I guess, our menu of strategies in other areas as well?
I think in the present, the, you know, the question would be, are we getting it out there effectively in Kenmore? And so we don't have the answer to that right now. So it would be something we would look into.
Right. I'm not sure that there's anything, for example, on the city's website. I'd have to look at that. But even if there were a link to the Arch website, I mean, it could be as simple as that, you know, if everyone decided that, no, we didn't want to take a more proactive approach, maybe there's just some simple techniques that could be used that would steer people to information they might need.
I do share Mike's concern a little bit about scope creep. And I also think it should be maybe addressed maybe more globally as a sort of an informational strategy on affordable housing, you know, more broadly. I don't necessarily know what that looks like, but those would be my concerns. I would agree with Mike that it's sort of moderate as a standalone.
Okay. I'm intrigued. Commissioner, Baker?
I would agree that it's more moderate, because there, I mean, having dealt with elderly parents making several transitions over the last 12 years, and now dealing with my husband's younger set of parents, the amount of information that is available to people for many different options, I think is really there, and especially for this next wave of seniors that'll come through this season of their life. The library, I mean, there's so much on the web in our Puget Sound region. I don't think the city has to be obligated to be the information highway. But I think if people came to our city reception desk and had some inquiries, our staff should definitely be trained to direct them to some of those.
Thank you, Carol. Scott?
I'm just moderate, maybe less than moderate, because I think the information is out there. But if there wasn't any information out there that they could get from all the sources, you know, like Arch, then that would be a problem.
Yeah. All right. So I heard moderately intriguing for that one, and my notes about, you know, scope creep and that kind of thing.
And let me just say, Dennis, I haven't been polling you, but anytime you want to jump in, please do.
Yeah. What he had told me earlier was that he mostly wanted to listen, and that if he had a comment, he would, he's, I think, on mute, he's muted, that he would for sure jump in, so.
Okay.
Here he is. Do you have some?
Thank you.
All right. So item C, accessory dwelling units. Again, this is a community education and outreach program, I suppose, in the vein of encouraging creation of affordable housing, affordable ADUs. We certainly already have rules on the books about ADUs, but there's not any kind of a, yes. Dennis?
Oh, you did that, right. Go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, there's not any kind of a campaign to advertise ADUs as an option.
Mike, did you want anything? No. This brought something to mind. I like ADUs as a concept for increasing, effectively increasing density and creating options. I like, one element I like is it gives the homeowner a chance to bring in revenue. Sometimes people can't afford that first home or the second home, and they, and I think Lori even spoke to this in a different context, where people came to council chambers and said, you know, we really want to, I can't remember what it was, maybe it was, not verbo, but the other one. Airbnb, where people said, don't limit, don't regulate those, because it's enabling us to generate income. On the other hand, you know, we're a suburban community, and people, some people moved out here to get less density. And so apart from my interest in ADUs, which I know are currently legal, where the question is, do we do anything to make it even more, make it easier or more, well, easier, I've kind of taken to asking people I know, people who are living in single-family zone neighborhoods, what do you think about having ADUs on your street or more ADUs on your street? And I'm getting interesting responses. Some surprise me. You know, people on one end of the political spectrum will say something contrary to what I expect and vice versa. And I was thinking, maybe it would help, and I know this is unscientific, but it's still a way of broadening our information, our source of, our background, how people, other people feel in this community. If people, each of us asks people we know, what do you think about this, this policy proposal for affordable housing, ADUs? And if you're at a gathering with your friends or something, and you bring it up, it's a pretty interesting topic, actually. So I was hoping maybe some of us could bring back that information and say, you know, I talked to half a dozen people, and here's, I was surprised by this, or I wasn't surprised by that. So just throwing it out there. Now, back to intriguing. Scott, does this intrigue you?
Well, it is about education, I guess, again. You know, it reminds me of the, somebody posted on my legal listserv about the Bar Association spending enormous money on education and, you know, getting the word out. And it was just, it was a real big number. I can't remember what it is. So it's, again, it's the scope of it, you know, if it creeps to too large. But, you know, I think the ADUs are a good idea.
Okay. Thanks. Carol?
I would support that. I think making that a common cultural bit of information in the city of Kenmore, what are our ADU requirements, and how could that benefit you? I think that would be a very good thing to do as a city.
Thank you. Vice chairman?
I agree that education would be useful in this area. I wonder if this is premature education until we know what, if anything, may change in terms of ADU requirements. I don't know exactly how they're, I mean, it's great to have education, but what if ultimately the city council decides they want to, you know, significantly change the current, the current ADU, you know, allowances and regulations? So I'm thinking it's a good idea, but I'm thinking it's maybe a little premature until that process is done. That's my.
Okay.
Yeah, I might just say, so when the strategy plan goes forward, you all will have prioritized your strategies. And as we always try to do, I think we would group things that fit together. So for example, if ADUs and looking at ADU regulations became a high priority strategy, we would pull this one in with it, just because it makes sense. I mean, we wouldn't come back a year later and say, now, what about education? I mean, we'll try to group them into packages that fit together well. At least we always try to do that. So it may be that we can make a note about which are related to others, so we'd be sure that they're considered at the same time, and you may want to give them a similar priority.
Well, that makes me feel more comfortable about this. I had a similar concern. Hard, hard to see this as a standalone item. If we have a strategy discussion, we decide, yes, that's where we're going to go. But sure, the city will have a full-throated support of it, but we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we have our majority on that.
Sorry, I'm taking notes here at the same time. Okay, so the next one, inventory, existing rent restricted assisted housing and affordable market rate housing.
And we actually do this on a routine basis anyways?
So that is probably a watch. If you're comfortable with that, we'll say this is already happening. And as we put with other things that have already been taken care of, we just say, watch this.
So is this basically data gathering?
Yeah.
Okay.
Inventory is a verb.
Yeah, I see that.
In this context, I was, until I realized that. Waiting to look for the verb.
There's no dumb questions.
There are no dumb questions.
Okay. Number E, promote use of weatherization programs. So I assume this has to do with maintaining existing housing stock.
Right. The programs, or the program that I'm aware of is funded and operated by King County. The city can help promote it to their citizens. A number of cities do that already.
So this is not creating a new program, but steering, again, it's more in the education indirect assistance vein, steering people to a program that might help them as a resident of King County with weatherization.
Okay, start at the left end of the podium.
I don't know if intrigued is the right description for this, but.
I think the next one coming up, I, I wouldn't think that this would be something that the city of Kenmore would get into directly. I think this is one more where there's other people out there who are already doing this, doing it well. So if there's ways we could help them in that, that would be fine, but I wouldn't want to be an initiator.
Right. I, I think, again, this is education or steering.
Yeah, the word promote, though.
Right. Right, it would definitely be promote if, I mean, we wouldn't steer somebody to another organization.
Support other agencies, efforts, regional efforts, something like that would make me feel more comfortable. What is the scope of weatherization? I mean, is it energy or is it, you know, making sure your, your downspouts are clean or?
That, I don't, do you have any experience with that, Laurie?
No.
I'm afraid we're returning more information.
Here we miss our, I'm sorry. We will gather more information on the weatherization program. How about that?
I, I cover, we, our company covers energy. So I can, I can say generally speaking, weatherization refers to measures that help basically tighten a house so it doesn't leak as much in terms of, mostly in terms of energy, could be electricity, could be natural gas. I guess it might be water as well, to the extent it saves electricity. And Mike's right, too, that it's not just King County, but utilities regularly have weatherization programs as well. I'm, I'm virtually certain Puget Sound Energy does, maybe the gas, on the gas side as well. So my thought is, yeah, that, this should also be part, again, of sort of a larger strategy of information. It seems like there's a bunch of really, you know, useful things that people can know, but we're just sort of throwing them out there piecemeal. And I don't know if that calls out for a separate, non-essential category, but I just would sort of encourage a little more strategic thinking on how this information is, is provided. Maybe it's, you know, part of a city website that provides links to these other services that really do make a difference in terms of affordable housing. I mean, weatherization can make a huge difference in people's energy bills, I, I'm, I'm certain of that, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, the PSE's got that covered. I, I mean, every month, I, you know.
Like rating?
Yeah, telling me that I'm a hog, you know.
Oh, do you do that thing where they compare you to your neighbor?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't seen that one.
You're, yes, because you're not a hog.
You must be the neighbor.
Only the hogs get it?
They know who's a hog, no.
Every year it goes down, I know that.
A few married last year.
But fewer kids at home, right? That's probably it.
So number G actually directly talks about energy and water efficiency measures. I, I think I agree that maybe, you know, all these indirect assistance things that we've been talking about in terms of education are listed separately and maybe instead we need to say, create a new subheading here that talks about education for residents about a variety of topics, including, you know, and then you get to the question of, well, how big is that scope and do we in fact support these programs or not? But is the commission comfortable with the idea of putting all of these under a broader heading of education to residents?
Any else?
Yeah. Okay. So F, universal, again, falls under the same category, promote universal design awareness. This is probably more for builders, but I think this gets to aging in place and, and is that?
Right. Well, we talked about the regulation side of it earlier, just kind of parallel to the ADU discussion we just had, we had, we talked about in a previous meeting about beefing up regulations as a strategy for universal design. This is the community information outreach side of that.
Right. Okay, so...
Which one are we on? We're on F?
That was F. G, again, we've just touched on already about energy and water efficiency measures as addressed in the utilities element where we talk about PSE's programs, for example. So I think B through G, all would fall under this heading of education. A is kind of a separate thing, that was the letter of support. And H, which is where we are now, is a different kind of a strategy, which talks about increased transportation access between special needs housing and community facilities and programs, sidewalks, ramps, et cetera. So do you want to?
Sure. Yes, sir.
Before we get off the utilities, on G it says implement energy and water efficiency measures. You're not talking about the city actually doing programs, are you? It's, that's sort of the way I read G there.
Well, I guess I was thinking more in terms of education, but you're right. I suppose that it could be a city role in their own facilities, right?
This refers to something in the utilities element. In fact, I think the, the housing policy, H1, 2, 4, SEP puts it that way also, as addressed in the utilities element. And I don't have that in front of me, so I don't know what...
It might be just a semantic thing. I read implement to mean that the city actually takes an active role in going out and, you know, doing these efficiency measures.
Yeah, I...
As long as it's clear that that's not the intent, because I don't think the city wants to be doing that.
Well, in their own facilities.
Maybe in your city hall, sure, or facilities.
I would say in city facilities, that would be something the city would maybe think about doing. So maybe this is actually two things. We can move a piece of it into the education for citizens in general, and then if we were to think about it in terms of city facilities, is that something that the commission would be interested in considering? So a program to improve energy and water efficiency in city facilities? We've done a good job with City Hall, but...
That's, that's good work, but I'm not sure how it relates to affordable housing.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. Any thoughts there?
I, I'm guessing that this, again, without having referred to the utilities element in a while, I'm guessing that this refers to something like stopping water leaks that, you know, could drive up housing bills, housing costs, utility bills.
Right, so, yeah.
I don't know.
Right.
Could be a variety of things, but we really need to go to the utilities element and find out what it says.
Right. I think we're back to education on this one. I don't think it's city implement because the city doesn't have a housing repair program. That's not something we've talked about. The county has a housing repair program. So I think it's, from my perspective, more of an education issue and we should take the word implement off of there.
Okay.
Okay, so H, again, was increased transportation access between special needs housing and community facilities and programs, through things like sidewalks and ramps.
This, my concern is that this is similar to the one we saw, the other category we saw, where the proposal was to require disability access to housing. And my thought it was, it would make housing more expensive. It's a, it may be a good social program apart from housing for the purposes of helping the disabled, but in terms of providing affordable housing, I don't think it helps. So my concern is this might be similar. It might be a good idea for the city to do as an independent, let's help the disabled, but, or special needs, but in terms of affordable housing, if you certainly, certainly it's the same thing if you required this cost be borne by private parties, that would make housing more expensive.
I think you're right. I think the intention was to assist people who live in group homes, adult family homes, other special needs housing, and the operators of that housing by making it easier for them to get, because they don't always get to choose, you know, the locate, their locations based on, you know, having the ones that are closest to transit, for example, or to libraries or what have you. So maybe they're located in places where there's no sidewalks. And the, and the intent would be for the city to think about beefing up pedestrian...
So it's, it sounds like it's a city expenditure.
Right.
That's the proposal. And our job is to come up with market proposals, right?
Well, your job is to think about what...
Non-subsidized?
Your job in this process is to think about what's worth talking about.
Yeah, I, I think what Doug is saying is it should go under direct assistance.
Direct assistance, right. The city would be paying for these changes in the infrastructure.
I see what you're saying.
Instead of, and, and we're supposed to come up with inducements for the private sector to make housing more...
Well, direct assistance, we usually use in the context of, or to mean funding to the housing providers.
To make the housing affordable.
To make the housing affordable.
Yeah, but that's still...
And as you said, this is not really directly making housing affordable, it's just making it more accessible.
Right, which is noble, but doesn't seem to fit. So I'm not intrigued, I guess. Others?
Well, if you're talking about direct assistance, then I don't think it's in our daily work here, I guess. Because you're talking about building a ramp for a, a house so the handicapped can get out of the house, or are you, are you talking about making a new sidewalk in front of it that has, you know...
Yeah, I...
The intent was for public improvements.
Right. I, I think maybe where you would go with this if you weren't thinking about it in the direct assistance area would be, you would say, "We, every year, we're going to set out our sidewalk priorities, we have a fixed sidewalk budget, but maybe we're going to place a higher priority on this segment of sidewalk which would serve this facility that has special needs folks as well as the rest of the community in that area." So it gets to prioritization, maybe not changing the level of, of assistance, but looking at prioritization in terms of facilities that may need special attention, I think.
And that's a noble cause, I think. I mean, we, I think the great thing about Kenmore is all these sidewalks we're putting in makes it so much nicer.
And safer?
Safer.
Others? So we have Mike, not so intrigued. I'm not so intrigued as a housing affordability proposal, but it is a disability and safety proposal, fine, but that's outside of what we've been asked.
I, I agree. I think it's a fine idea, just not, it seems a little beyond our, our scope on, on this particular one, in terms of priorities.
So I'm going to put, I heard from three of you that you're not intrigued with this one because it's outside the scope. Is that what I'm hearing?
And Scott, where are you understanding the scope, is that issue?
I don't think that this proposal by itself would reduce housing costs, would increase them. So I'm, I don't want to make this part of our package to the city council.
But if you were thinking about writing a letter and helping a nonprofit organization go after capital where they could build a facility, wouldn't you want it to be something that the city would prioritize accessibility to the facility as part of the indirect assistance? I, I mean, it, it's kind of a puzzle because what it is, is it's the city saying, you know, for, for people that cannot afford housing, we still want to provide good access in and out of the property.
Yeah, probably the only example, and again, I'm working without all of the information, not, but an example I can think of. This is just me thinking about this. So say you were going to put in a, a facility that serves special needs customers and you couldn't put it near transit because, as we all know, in areas of transit, land costs are higher typically, so it would be a more expensive facility if you provided it right next to the transit area. But in fact, it's kind of like the city center maybe versus the far suburbs. So it's cheaper to move farther out, you can get a more affordable facility, and then it would be the city saying, okay, for, as we prioritize our sidewalks, to support that decision, we'll try to improve accessibility there. Now, that's a stretch, but that's kind of the connection I see might exist between this measure and affordability.
I see your point, but when I think about this, I keep coming back to, so how does this help with affordable housing? I think all the things we've talked about really are general, I think, requirements that we would build into, into how we develop housing and sidewalks throughout the city. You could have a handicap person in a private residence, you could have handicapped people trying to get in and out of a school, a church, so I don't know how you would limit that. I think this is a, a community-wide standard issue, not a, and so it's out of scope, it's not really, I see, contributing to affordable housing, unless you were to get into some kind of subsidization, which then we're back to direct support. Again, out of scope.
So we got three and a half.
I'll defer.
You're a half. The two halves make a whole. That's four noes.
So I'm saying not intriguing. Yeah.
I mean, this, the council, when they grapple with some of this stuff, they can always put it back in.
Yeah.
It's just that we're trying to give them, you know, something to work with.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
That's how, that's how I'm rationalizing it.
Yeah. Well, you know, this is a long list already.
It is.
And so I feel like kind of at the point where if we're wrestling over this, if it's a borderline thing, I'm less inclined because there's some big ticket issues we have that we all agree on, that we want to make our strongest pitch for. And if we get into hair splitting over, well, what kind of ramp and this excess and this kind of thing, I don't think we're giving them a big picture, which is what they'll want.
Okay, so the next one, last one in this particular section is partner with employers to provide affordable housing for their employees.
Do tell.
Yes. Talk about that.
Well, there's been, you know, I've heard a lot of talk over the years about employer-assisted housing. I've never seen it done. I know it, there are cases of it in other parts of the country. So we put it out there, I think, as, as an example of something that's, that's out there somewhere, but we'd have to study it more. They built towns for company towns, I guess that would be the...
The Pullman Rail Company comes to mind.
Right.
Well, it's actually what's created some of the housing problems in Seattle, is that you have these big companies that are pulling all these people into downtown and people who used to live downtown cannot afford it. So even some of their employees who might not be the executives or, you know, the leads on certain projects, but they're all the supportive people, they can't afford to live in downtown Seattle. And they're, my story is, I do have a niece who benefited from Amazon taking over a building that was eventually going to be retrofitted, and for the period of time that they were working on the financing for the project, the employees could lease these apartments affordably, but it was a very temporary situation. And when the building was retrofitted for condos, they sold for, you know, one and a half million dollars. So it was a temporary band-aid.
I know this is also done sometimes in resort communities and other places where housing is ridiculously expensive for, especially for the service employees. My question is on this one, I mean, what employers would be large enough to even consider? I mean, a Bastier, I, I'm just wondering if there's even an employer, you know, base that would, that this would even be remotely possible or feasible?
Well, the school district comes to mind, but...
School district, okay, but that's beyond Kenmore.
Whether they had the resources to do that, I don't know, but...
Yeah, that's beyond Kenmore.
The North Shore School District includes Bothell and Woodinville.
Yeah, Bothell and Woodinville. So it'd have to be a, you know, a broader approach, maybe a regional initiative.
My bigger concern is what does the word partner mean?
My bigger concern is, what does the word partner mean? What, what, how much of this ball is the city gonna carry here? It, it sounds like direct subsidy if it's gonna partner, and that's again outside our scope.
I, I would, I would agree. I, I don't know what indirect partner is.
Yeah, I think, uh, if we're gonna leave it under indirect assistance, we should change that to encourage employers to provide affordable housing for their employees. But I'm, I'm not hearing any intrigue.
Yeah, it seems like a reach, given our limited, the limited size of our economy.
In a, in a perfect world, that sounds great.
Okay, so the next sent, or section, excuse me, is, uh, regional and statewide initiatives. So all of, um, these are promoting or encouraging, collaborating, uh, working with other cities to address affordable housing topics. So we can start at the top, A, promote housing repair rehabilitation assistance, uh, E.G. from King County for homeowners and landlords. And this gets, again, participate in a regional universal design rehab program. Is, there is such a program?
No, I don't believe there is.
Okay. Okay. So the housing repair program, the King County Housing Repair Program definitely exists. There are Kenmore residents that are served by it. So this, to my mind, uh, from my perspective, might be a watch item, because it already exists, we already have, uh, residents who participate in it. The, that subsection, participate in regional universal design rehab program, it sounds like there is not such a program. So that would be a, a more, um, would require more action from the city to join in with others to participate in that program.
I'm gonna go on this end. What do you think?
If the county's doing it, let the county do it, I guess. I, I, if, if they're doing it right now, I mean, you're saying that they're doing it?
Uh, there is a housing repair program, correct.
Does it help low-income people?
Yeah. They have to be, um, low-income. It's funded through a community development block grant, that federal money.
Anybody else?
I mean, I think it's, I think this is one of those things where, as a small city, we need to be aware of what's available in the county. And make, make that available, or as a bridge, not that the city pays for it, but bridging appropriate homeowners, the information and, you know-
Right, it, it kinda gets back to the education thing.
It does, and it, it is a way to serve your residents, though, so that they don't have to move to Monroe.
So maybe that one, um, we could move up from C back into that whole education piece.
Yeah, I agree.
Are you comfortable with that?
Comfortable with that.
I'd suggest that all of these really fit into the same category, that one's education. How do we leverage, uh, existing programs that are supported and funded elsewhere by the small city? That's, that's an important strategy for us. So I would put all of those. When we talk about promote or support, I think that's what we're really talking about.
Okay, so, uh, Mike, what you're saying is that B, support various housing-related consumer protection programs?
Yes.
Provide information on resources, foreclosure counseling. Again, these are all, um, regional and statewide initiatives, financial counseling for first-time buyers. So I, I agree, with the exception of that subsection I and A, which to my, to our knowledge, does not exist, universal design rehab program. So if that's intriguing-
Can we strike that one?
Well-
Because it doesn't exist?
We probably wouldn't strike it. It would be the question of whether we wanted to encourage the, again, this isn't a Kenmore initiative, it would be a, a county-wide initiative. If we feel that that's interesting and we wanted to encourage the county to look at that, we could certainly do that.
I don't know what it is. Like, you know, these are, this is a proper noun, universal design.
Right. Universal design is that concept that, uh, you can retrofit a house to, um, to be used. For example, the doors are wide enough for wheelchairs. I hope I'm speaking correctly, grab bars in the bathroom, that kind of thing. So it would be sort of a, expanding the King County Housing Repair Program to include these universal design measures.
And there's even house flippers that specialize in doing this, because there's a market for it. It doesn't always mean it's affordable, but there's a need, so.
Right. It's a way to keep people in their homes longer.
Right.
So does, uh, do you think that encouraging King County to do that is something that's intriguing, that you, we should look at, or?
Interesting. Thank you.
How does it differ from the uniform, uniform building code?
Well, the uniform building code, for example, I don't think requires, um, that doors in a home, for example, be wide enough to accommodate a wheelchair, or that you have to have certain, there may be in some facilities where you have to have grab bars in the bathroom. There, there are techniques that you can use that the uni, that the building code would not require. And in the context here, what we're saying is that these housing repair programs should be expanded to, um, include these universal design things, that it's not just a repair. It's not a roof repair or a water heater repair. This is going a little beyond that to expand into things that, um, would allow seniors to stay in their home, even if they're not, like, repair items. Do you think that's a fair characterization?
I, I think that's, that sounds really good, but I'm really concerned about when you start layering in. Are we getting into new zoning or building requirements?
No.
What are we getting into here?
No, this is only, it's under regional statewide initiatives. Kenmore's role would be to encourage the housing repair program through, you know, we sit on these various, staff sits on these various committees. Kenmore might take a role in saying, "Housing repair program, do more with universal design." Because in Kenmore, we feel that that's an issue that will allow seniors particularly, or the disabled, to stay in their homes longer.
That sounds good, but I'm not sure how important that decision is.
Sounds like a not intriguing.
Yeah, and I think we're getting back to, based on what Carol showed me about universal design, are we putting more pressure on builders and investors to spend more, have to spend more money on housing?
But what you're also wanting to do is, as a city, you're trying to protect your city and the residents that might fall into that category, and just statistically, more and more of them are going to. I mean, the baby boomers are now turning seventy at the rate of one per second. So it's, it's kind of, as a city, I think we're always gonna be behind the curve, but at least being aware of it in our promotion of affordable housing or our discussion of affordable housing, I think it should stay in there. Maybe not the highest priority, but it could be grouped with the senior housing focus as, "How do we promote universal design through, you know, fill in the blank?" Because that's a reality that much of our population will face sooner rather than later.
I, I'm real sympathetic to making it easier for folks to age in place, and more sympathetic over time.
Every day.
Every day. A little more obvious. So the stairs get steeper and steeper. But I think what we wanna do is, we wanna make it easier, particularly in our community where we have a lot of single-family homes. We wanna make it easier for folks to be able to age in place. We want them, to make it easier for them to be able to adapt their existing home, which was built to different standards to universal design. So if we were saying we want to come up with policies or strategies that would make this easier for our citizens to do, then, then, fine. Promoting universal design to me begins to segue into something that could be very different and very restrictive. So I'm not sure how we would do that. In an earlier meeting, I talked a little bit about, maybe there's some, uh, tax credit, maybe there's some other ways to be able to approach this. I haven't thought this through, so I'm not, I'm not proposing that. But I think there's probably a better way to do this that would make it specific to the individual, who could make a choice, rather than making a, a blanket code or, or zoning sort of change that would apply broadly.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. Um, the market's there, the market will grow. Investors will, their, their investments will reflect that demand. So anything broader than a case-specific program seems to me at risk of increasing housing costs than reducing it. It's necessary and it's gonna be, as Carol said, it's gonna grow, but it can without mandating anything. That's my concern. We have all, and these words come up, and I'm sure everybody, as I do, looks at them and says, "Okay, well, what does participate mean? What does promote mean? What does support mean? What does partner mean?" And the devil's in that detail. But this is one that doesn't exist, and there's so many, and I'm coming, coming back to that. There's so many ones that we know we agree on that have tangible, uh, that will tangibly reduce housing costs and housing prices, that I, that's why I'm leaning more towards saying no to something that's on the border, and this is one of those.
I hear two noes. I see three noes.
I'm gonna keep it in there.
Yeah.
I would prefer to, just because of the seniors being a segment of our population. I, I, I don't think statistically they're as high yet, but they will be. But I think being aware of universal design is important.
Duly noted.
Well, I just-
One yes?
I don't think we can mess around with the uniform, uniform building code, because that's gonna be the code, it should be the code. But promoting people to get handbars in their tub, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, but, but I don't know how we would be doing that, if, if giving away, you know, uh, plans to do that. I, you know, that's a noble cause, but I don't know.
Right, and, and again, this wasn't Kenmore. This is a regional or a statewide initiative. Does the city wanna support that?
I think on that basis, I think we could give it some moderate support. I, I, I kinda agree with Carol on that. If that's the focus, I don't wanna ch, go tinkering with the, the building code or the codes in the city here. If it's done on a statewide basis, then it's, then it's okay, 'cause then you're gonna get everybody joining in on that.
And I think we have to go back to, what, what is Kenmore? We're actually defining our community. Whereas a, a community like La Conner or Lake Stevens, they have dual purposes out there. People don't wanna live in the city when they're retired or when they age necessarily, when they still wanna be independent. And so they have used their affordable housing, you know, ordinances to promote a different type of housing that is affordable, to attract what they want their community to be. I just think the reality is, is we're gonna have people that age in our city, and maybe right now, it's not something that we need to make a very high priority and be really intrigued about, but I think we need to be aware.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, Dennis?
Did he hear me?
Yes.
Good. Um, I'm with Carol.
Okay. It survives.
Okay.
The deadlock. It moves forward. Next.
Okay. Uh, the next, actually, the next few, we, we kind of touched on, that these might fall all into the, um, educational realm, but I suppose it could be a legislative, more of a legislative action. Support various housing-related consumer protection programs. Resources to tenants facing eviction, foreclosure counseling, and financial counseling. So again, um, these are regional or statewide initiatives. The question is whether the city should be involved in supporting, uh, these concepts, these regional or statewide initiatives.
Are we back to education?
It's ki, it's not education to the consumer, it's more, like, does the city take a stand or take a position on these topics, I think? Supporting various housing-related consumer protection programs. Again, not done by the city, done regionally or statewide, but-
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Well, I just had a question. Does, does that exist now at a regional, uh, level? Uh, this, this specific thing about supporting consumer protection programs? Mike, do you know, is this, does this, is this already existing or, or not?
I'm, I'm afraid I don't know. I'm sorry.
I, I, I can tell you that there's definitely, uh, help for people who are being evicted. They've got, uh, free attorneys down in King County for that, and they've got, uh, Hope Link and other, uh, uh, the Salvation Army and all that stuff. That's, there's a bunch of programs out there, and I think there's got foreclosure, foreclosure counseling that'd probably be on the fed, federal level, but I don't know the extent. I think there's a lot of that already going on.
Oh, of course, yeah.
I don't, I don't need that. I, I think we're wasting our time on that.
I'm not sure what the city's role is advantaged in.
I mean, there's a bunch of stuff going on on that, that, that I don't think it's, it would be, I think it would be a waste of our time to even, you know, because it's all out there. It's, it's being addressed, I think.
Would this be a, like, a watch item? When, when we've said things have already been done, we've sometimes assigned a watch status to them.
I mean, I don't, I just-
You think just not intriguing at all?
Yeah, I mean, because you're getting evicted and, and-
Yeah.
You can get a, you can get a free attorney, I, I guarantee you, and, and they do a good job down there. I've, I've, I've seen that. Uh, my ex-associate used to volunteer for it, and, and he had a lot of fun with it, so.
And got some good experience.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's one of the double benefits of it. Vice Chairman?
Well, I just wondered, I mean, could this be under, um, again, education and outreach? I mean, if these programs already exist, could this be part of our, I think you mentioned that initially in this segment, right?
Right.
Just letting people know that it's available through, through our educational, whether it's, you know, website link or, or such.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. If we make it education.
Okay, so, uh, move these to educational.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't think we need to spend any money on it. You can put a link on the, on the website, but, I mean, because it really is out there.
Okay, so C, collaborate with other local governments directly and through PSRC and other organizations on regional housing strategies, including programs serving the homeless. So I think this means that we stay in touch with our neighbors and our regional organization, um, and collaborate with them.
Comment?
Well, I might add that the city has, like you mentioned earlier, Lori, that you really do, as a staff, and the council does this as well, to be connected region-wide. Recently, um, one of the professional organizations hosted, I think, a quarterly meeting, and they had a guest speaker, which was Ed Murray.
Right, you attended.
I, I went to it. Thank you.
Thanks.
And it was very informative to have somebody who's in the middle of this topic, like, pretty deep right now, come out and, you know, just give his thoughts, and he was very articulate. I think he, um, it changed my perspective of what I hear about him in the news, and kind of some of the strategies that they're trying to implement in Seattle. I, I probably don't think the same way he does. Like, in some ways, it feels like they've ignored a lot of problems on purpose, so now they can tap into some federal funding to create a homeless czar, and, you know. I mean, that, that could be one way of looking at it. I, but I do think that as a small satellite city- But I do think that as a small satellite city, we are gonna need to grapple with some of this. So, staying in touch makes a lot of sense to me.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else?
I agree with Carol. Just, I think we should collaborate.
Thanks, Scott. I agree, it's a regional problem. We gotta be part of it. It's gotta have a regional solution, so. Of course, I really wanna know what collaborate means, but I guess I'm certainly willing to push this down to the next step to find out.
By the way, a historical note, we used to have a homeless guy who lived under the bridge over there called Bottles in the 50s and 60s, and I think in, even in the 70s. I don't know if you're aware of that, but it was-
Did, you were living here then?
Yes, I was.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. Were you living here then?
I was, but I-
You weren't living here in the 60s, 50s.
I was.
For what, a day?
I was born, I was born into Kenmore.
Yeah.
But it's a great story. You can read about it through the people that did the mural.
Oh, that's interesting.
If you follow those stories in the Kenmore Reporter, there's some great, and, and his story is in there. Great stories about the city of Kenmore.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, certainly a good idea to collaborate. Because maybe it's a little, not quite at that step. When it comes to prioritizing, I mean, doesn't it seem to me we could be a little more effective? You know, the, the closer we work, you know, we work with ARG sort of in King County. When we start talking about lobbying at the state or, you know, federal level, it seems like our influence may, you know, may not be as great. So, if, at the point where we're ready to sort of prioritize our collaborations, it seems like the more local, the better, and sort of align with similarly situated cities. Maybe that's, that may already be part of the sort of legislative strategy for the city. I, I'm not extremely familiar with that, but that's my thought on that.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay.
Okay. So, the last, not the last, next to the last section, work with other cities to support county, state, and federal legislation and funding that supports local housing efforts. And then there are a whole bunch of subsets here. So, the first, state legislation to expand local funding options for affordable housing, e.g., expand property tax exemption demolition fee. I don't know what demolition fee is.
Well, demolition fee would be a, a charge on home demolitions that would go, and the fee would go toward affordable housing.
Oh.
But the point of this isn't the specific actions. The more the point is to give local governments more home rule authority to do those kinds of things. Maybe we could, maybe you'd wanna deal with these on a exception basis? Given the time it might take to go through them one at a time, if you want. Pull out the ones that you- I'm fine with that if- That you're really opposed to. Others are. Or that you're really in favor of, strongly in favor of. Anybody have exceptions to any of these? I have one, and that is Roman V. State legislation for tenant protections. And then it's got a variety of things on there. Portability of tenant screening reports, just cause eviction notice of rent increase, relocation assistance. A lot of those are things that Seattle has passed, but very few other cities have passed. And I think those, a lot of them have, it's sort of like Section 8. They put a lot of limits on what landlords can do. The just cause eviction ordinance is a good example. It's like, you can't evict a month-to-month tenant unless you quote "just cause." There's a list of like 18, 15 or 18 just causes. And of course, if they don't pay rent, you can evict them, and if they damage the unit, you can evict them, and that kind of thing. But you can't just terminate their month-to-month tenancy. Let's say they're a very difficult tenant. Other tenants don't like them, they're loud, you have to repeatedly, they, they cure their faults, but they have, you have to keep following up. Well, in Seattle, you gotta live with them. You can't just say, you know, I'm gonna give you 20 days' notice, and you should go find another place. You can't do that. Unless they go too far and they don't pay the rent, or they do something they haven't fixed. So, I know there are a lot of landlords who object to that. It's like a permanent tenancy for people you don't wanna deal with. And it's the same effect, I think, if people look to see, Kenmore, and it's one of the few cities that says, oh, you gotta, as a landlord, you've gotta, you can't evict under these circumstances. They're not gonna invest here, and that's gonna perpetuate this supply-demand imbalance. So, that one, I would say no. The others, I'm, I think I'm okay with. But again, the, my problem with the others are, those are direct fiscal investments. It's either a tax credit or a subsidy, which are effectively the same thing. The government's giving up money or charging money. One way or the other, they're having to spend money or forego revenue, which is the same effect on a, on a balance sheet. So, I'm not sure that fits in our instructions.
I, I think it would be fine. I think the council was talking about direct funding of programs. I could see, you know, multifamily tax exemption, yeah, we would, I guess that would affect revenues, but it's, I think you can make that argument, but I think, I think these would be okay in the, in the council, council's mind.
Yeah, I, I second what Doug says. I would third it. I look at these, and I can understand how someone might think that these are somehow indirect, but we're all part of the county, we're all part of the state. Any new funding sources that they generate are gonna come from a local level ultimately. And so, we've already looked askew at that. And I see, so I don't see passing this up to a state or regional level as any different from having the same revenue imposition at, at, at the city.
So, let me, I just now heard from three of you. So, what you're saying is that you want, don't wanna tackle these? You want the council to tackle these? So, you don't wanna send forward a, a perspective in the housing strategy plan, for example, on the multifamily tax exemption? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you're, I'm, I'm basing mine on, we're going beyond the scope of our instruction, and you're saying, no, we probably are not. So, I'm not sure where I sit on this.
Right.
But I agree with Mike. I think this is, this is a tax and spend issue, all of these things. They're just not city tax and spend, they're county or state.
Right, I, I think the difference that I see is, for example, the multifamily tax exemption is in, is in the municipal code. We've dealt with it through code amendments. So, it's, I'm viewing it more as a code issue than a financial issue, but of course, it has financial implications. So, I see both sides of the coin. I, I'm kind of, I think the council would be surprised if you didn't come forward with some consideration of the multifamily tax exemption, for example. But you can say, we consider that direct assistance, and we, as a commission, decided that we didn't wanna talk about that one.
You know, I'm willing to take up this multifamily tax exemption or another fiscal proposal if you think that's what they want us to do. I'm not even sure what it is. It sounds like they're just gonna, they're gonna get a big tax break or no tax for building multifamily housing or something, but-
They get a tax break, we have that already for some parts of the city.
Right.
The multifamily tax exemption for some developments, but it's only in a limited area.
Okay. So, I'm kinda depending on you here. Is this, if you think, and it sounds like you do, this is within the scope of their direction, then I'm willing to consider it.
Yeah, so, the ones that I think are within your scope are I, where we're talking about impact fees. And Doug V, which you've already called out as state legislation. I think it should be four, it shows as two, but it should be four. State legislation to address condominium issues. That has to do with how condominium repairs, how long the property owner is responsible for those. And that's been a real disincentive to condo development. The multifamily tax exemption, I think, is within your purview. So, two is a little more maintain and expand state and federal funding programs that support local efforts. I think you could address that one. And then, local funding options. Again, we're talking about the property tax exemption. I personally think you could address all of these. It's your choice. If you're uncomfortable and you feel that it's more like direct assistance, and you would not like to make a recommendation, and you would like it to go forward and have the council tackle these, it's your choice, it's certainly not mine.
Okay, well, I just wanna know where the line is, because we've had other issues where you've thought, you know, this is more like direct, let's take it off the table. This struck me as the same. But if you think this is something they expect us to respond to, I'm happy to do it. So, I'm inclined to say I'm intrigued by one, two, three, four, which should be four, not five, and reduce impact fees. I'm intrigued enough to learn more about it. So, everything but V, I would go forward with.
I think we should go forward with all of them and just keep them as a group, because they are very related. It, it, it's how we talk to the other cities around us and come up with strategies. It doesn't mean Kenmore has to adopt everything the bigger cities do, but we have to be able to dialogue about these ideas.
Any else?
Well, I agree with Doug on V. I think that's, you know, I totally agree with him on that. So, I would take that up.
How about the others?
The others?
Yeah.
It, it seems like it's direct assistance, but we, if, if we're gonna consider it.
They wanna hear from us?
If, they can, tell them what we think.
Right. And they can promptly discard it. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I agree with Doug and Scott on this one. I think V there is, I, I'm struggling to see even the, you know, kind of the linkage to affordable housing. Again, you know, there may be some valid points there, but I, I guess I see that as a little, a little beyond our scope. So, I would agree with looking at one through four and six.
Mike?
Well, I keep coming back to, what is our direction? The direction is, yes, you should look at and consider direct support, fund affordable housing. Then I, whether that's through working with other jurisdictions to do that, or within ourselves, or on city, I, I don't see the difference. So, I think if you put one on the table, you put both on the table. And before we did that, I, I think, from what I heard before, I think we need to have some direct response, clarification and direction from the city council before we did that. Unless, you know.
Okay.
Unless I'm wrong. I thought I heard that we were said, we were told not to-
I can see where, yeah, I know.
Now I'm hearing that-
I know.
Yeah.
Direct, indirect, direct is-
That's what it is.
So, help me out here. You know, if we're gonna talk about subsidization to encourage building of low-income housing by, whether that comes through action by city code or, or zoning or subsidy, I don't see the difference between supporting that and supporting, talking with other cities about going out to the state and federal government to do the same thing. It just seems to me that there's something disingenuous about that. Now, I just-
Yep.
I'm not unfamiliar with that approach.
This is sausage-making, Mike.
Yeah, I-
Okay?
That's right. Get on board.
So, maybe it would help if we looked at some of the things under direct assistance. The categories that we have shaded. So, they are, provide local funding assistance, continue-
Lori, could you move the, the thing back up? Because it's really hard to read the shaded part.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's gonna be hard to read unfortunately on this as well, but maybe we can-
This is, this is better, though.
Okay. All right, so, expand use of city general fund. Dedicate a local revenue source, property tax levy for affordable housing. Here it is. Here's the crossover. New source authorized by state legislation, see regional state initiatives. A local voluntary employers fund. Create targeted programs for funding assistance. So, again, dedicating money directly to rehab of manufactured housing, down payment assistance, revolving loan fund, support development of emergency and permanent housing, our own home repair program, fund infrastructure. That's kind of a crossover with that sidewalk one. Funding for home visits, review permit, impact fees. So, here's one that also touches on the statewide initiative. And this one, giving surplus land. Okay, so, if we go back down here and look at these six. So, this one, state legislation to address condominium issues. That, to me, doesn't seem like a direct assistance strategy. I think you've already agreed that V is a not intrigued. Working with King County Metro to reduce impact fees for affordable housing. So, if you wanna consider that direct assistance, if you wanna consider the multifamily tax exemption, so it's not committing city dollars except in the reverse. We're not, we're not getting money that we could otherwise. This one may be direct assistance. And again, this one, local funding options. So, this one doesn't feel the same way to me. If there were state legislation that could expand local funding options, it doesn't mean that the city has to do anything, but it would expand options. So, you tell me what you wanna do with it. If you don't wanna tackle any of them, that's fine. I know V, you're not interested in. I would encourage you to look at four, which appears to be two, because that one is not-
I'm fine with four.
Yeah, four is good.
Condo issues.
Mm-hmm. And that is-
I'm looking into that.
Yeah, that is an indirect way. I mean, when you think about when the housing crunch came, there were lots of condominiums that just folded up and died. And maybe there could have been a strategy to keep people there, to work through those issues. It's just a tough-
It's a tough one, and it's-
It's a tough one.
It's really a legal thing.
It is.
So, a lot of condominiums went up when the house, housing market was booming in the 2000s. A lot of them were converted apartment complexes.
Correct.
And then they leaked. And the people who bought these condos were suing the developers of the condos for construction defects. And the developers went to the state and said, we're going bankrupt here. We can't function as an industry with all these lawsuits. And I've seen both sides of this. In fact, I've seen more of the homeowner's side of this, so I was more sympathetic to them, because when you buy the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a condo that leaks, you should have some legal recourse. So, the state did that, but now the industry has basically disappeared. And that is an area of really hot demand right now, because it's more affordable to buy a condo than it is a single-family residence. So, I don't know which way the law should go on this, but I think it's strictly a legal liability question. And whether we can recommend something to the council, I'm fine considering the pros and cons in trying to do that. Scott, did you wanna jump in?
It's an insurance issue, too, more than anything. If you can't insure it, then you're not gonna do it.
Well, that's it, because of the liability.
Yeah.
Unless state law changed, the insurance companies aren't gonna cover it.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's-
Because they took a bath on it.
I mean, that's, that's an issue that is, I mean, that, that's a big issue that-
I agree.
For us to take on.
But the council's gonna, apparently, they're gonna take it on in one form or another. Or they wanna know, okay, is there some direction here? We could probably put more time into it than they can. But, so I'm willing to give them some kind of idea.
We need to hear you discussing, because it sounds to me like the expertise to give meaningful input to the city council here is beyond at least all the two people sitting today. So, I mean, our-
That's a good question.
... city council could be, you ought to go get legal advice on this, if this is something you wanna do, if the city wants to take this on. But I don't even know how in the scope of the city to be able to do this.
Well, they'd ask their city attorney, okay, what are the merits legally of this issue? But this is really an advocacy question. It's about whether you lobby the state- It's about whether you lobby the state to change the law. And it's a big lift to even digest this issue and come up with a reasonable position on it. So, I don't know. I mean, we could say something, or we could ignore it, because it's too much to take on.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking, you'd have to. The legal aspects of it are numerous and.
Are very complex. Legal and financial.
It really comes down to sloppy construction, quite frankly, and bad product. And so, I mean, if we can, maybe that's, we could, you know, approach it on that. But you're not going to be able to do anything if the insurance companies are going to, they're not going to say, oh, Kenmore, they're okay, we can insure in Kenmore.
It's a statewide issue, I think. It's a state law issue.
Right.
Because the law is already on the books right now that discourages insurance companies from covering. So unless that law changes, nothing will change in this, is unlikely to change in this industry. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, so I think what I hear is that you are supportive of working with other cities to support legislation or to tackle this issue of condominium issues. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm hearing, I'm intrigued enough to try and get into it. That's all I'm saying. I frankly think we can't come up with a really solid recommendation on this, but I don't think they can either.
No, no. This is a participatory, this is just saying, we think it's an issue. We think we should participate on a regional or a statewide initiative to address this topic, because we think it's an issue.
I think they'll be chewing on these for a long time.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean as a city, we can't participate. I think it would be foolish, being that we are a growing city and we kind of have some estimated growth numbers. We're trying to tag into transit and, you know, light rail, that kind of stuff. So I think to not participate, it's more intriguing to me to say, let's participate. And then if it becomes something that is too cost prohibitive, then we can say, you know, we're going to change this priority.
So I think what I heard from two, three, and six, which is impact fees, the multifamily tax exemption, and the state and federal funding programs, you felt that that was direct assistance and you don't want to address that?
I do, but I do think it's direct assistance. I think Mike is right. But if the council expects us to respond to that, I'm willing to do it. And we should do it. It's our job. So can we ask them? Is it difficult to do that kind of thing?
I think it would be difficult to get on a council agenda to ask this one question. I think if you're uncomfortable, we should move it off into the direct assistance. And I just, I don't think you'll be in, you won't be in trouble if you do it one way or the other.
We're just prioritizing.
Right.
We're sorting out how to think about these things.
You know, I actually, go ahead. I think, no, I, one is, I think that's on the right, the correct side of indirect. Because it's talking about options. In my.
Right.
Even the second one, you could argue, because they're talking about state and federal funding programs that support local efforts. They're not saying necessarily that local efforts need to do X, Y, or Z, or spend X, Y, or Z.
It does expand.
State, federal funding, not city programs.
Yeah, but Mike's point is, we're all affected by that.
Well, we're, yeah, we're the city of Kenmore.
If you crossed out state legislation and put in King County City Council, what would be the reaction?
You mean county council?
I'm sorry, Kenmore. Instead of state legislation to expand local funding, it said Kenmore City Council to expand local funding options. How would we feel about that?
Direct.
I would definitely be direct.
That's the way I look at it. I think putting in the word state legislation just substanticates the, you know, it hides the ball here.
Here's the thing, and this, just speaking for me, I have a bit of an opinion on the extent to which, or a philosophy by which the city should spend resources on this. So I'm happy to provide it, in a very general way. And not a lot that's specific. For example, I think if the city is going to spend money or impose taxes for affordable housing, it should be a citywide responsibility, not that of people that they decide can afford it, which is often wrong, because housing is expensive and just because somebody owns an expensive house doesn't mean they have the money to pay more taxes. And I've heard proposals batted around about, oh, well, let's increase either the excise tax on sales of real property. And I'm thinking, well, you don't know what they spent on it. You don't know what their mortgage is. You don't know what their loss is, if they have any. You know, if the market falls, which apparently a lot of housing advocates think will never happen again. And yet it's happened three times in the last 15 years. Three housing recessions in this area. And there's this sense that, oh, it'll go up forever. Well, then you impose these taxes and these burdens, and then it goes down, then what do you have? So I do have some degree of opinion on a general proposal not to get carried away with tax and spend policies for affordable housing. Market incentives are great, and if it's citywide, like a levy or something, and everybody wants to carry the ball on that, that's fine, too. But don't pick and choose who your victims are, because they didn't create the problem.
I agree with you. But we still have to be able to recommend some kind of a priority should the council look at these.
And I'm happy to say, they're going to look anyway, I think. That's on their direct assistance list anyway, so they're going to look. And if they've opened the door for us to render an opinion, I'm ready to step in and say at least that much.
So maybe we need to go one by one?
We do.
Okay, so number I, state legislation to expand local funding options. Should we work with other cities to support that? Do you want to defer it to the council, or do you want to take a position? That you're intrigued or not intrigued?
We're not intrigued, and we want to defer to the council.
I'm intrigued, but I'm in the minority, so.
One intrigued, one not intrigued. Mike's a not intrigued. Scott? That's three not intrigued. I'm intrigued, but I'm going to probably morph all these into one proposal and not get into the details.
Okay.
Which might be cheating a little bit, I know, but.
So we might need Dennis. Okay, so then.
Do you want to comment on subsection D I?
I would. I guess the thing is, this is a financial issue. But if we're being directed to look at it, it seems to me we should take the whole tax. So I would support I.
Okay, so that's a deadlock. I think we move forward at least to look at it a little bit more.
Okay. All right, the second one, maintain and work with other cities to support legislation and funding to maintain and expand state and federal funding programs that support local efforts.
Same. Mine's an intrigued enough to move forward on it.
Mine as well.
Two?
Three.
Three? I think that moves the ball anyway. You're welcome to comment.
I defer to you.
The others.
The others.
Mike, I think I know your position, but.
Well, yeah, just to restate it. And I think if you, these are advocacy questions. Should the, are we saying that the city ought to advocate for these things?
Or consider advocating?
Consider advocating.
Again.
You're either going to advocate it or not.
But we're not there yet to advocate. We're just trying to see if we want to consider it for advocacy. That's why.
So we're telling the city council that we think they should consider advocating for these things.
I'm just saying, I'm willing to find out more.
Find out more before we do a recommendation, yes.
Yeah, it's basically, we're saying we're intrigued enough to find out more.
But we got three yeses, so I think we kind of, that bumps it down the road anyway. We could ask Dennis, but.
Two?
Three. One, two, three intrigued.
Right, but there are six of you, so. All right, then it bumps it down the road.
Are you guys, if we have a, this isn't up to me. If we have a three, because we only have six voting commissioners tonight, we have a three and three deadlock, I've inferred that to mean we at least bump it down the road.
And you can give it a low priority if.
Right.
Again, my opinion on this would change considerably if I knew what the direction was.
Yeah.
Right.
If somebody can tell me that we do or don't have direction to look at direct funding, then.
I hear you, and I agree.
I don't know how to.
I hear you.
Laurie, if I can just say, did this council, did they do the shaded out area and then left this there, or did you guys, or Arch, or?
We did the shading for the things that were considered direct assistance. And again, it was considered in the context of city of Kenmore funding of activities.
Gotcha.
Mike's point is well taken. The state and federal initiatives would also ultimately trickle down to local funding. But it's not quite the same thing. So there is a lack of clarity over whether you should or shouldn't. But again, you're not going to get in trouble either way.
No, because you have to go back to what, to letter D. I mean, we're basically looking at, are we willing to work with these other entities to support local affordable housing efforts? I just think that, you know, it's okay for us to weed some of these out if we just really don't like them. But I think overall, what we're really trying to decide is, it's hard to get your hands around the whole affordable housing issue when it comes to these specific things, because we don't know how it's going to affect people.
And you don't know what the proposals are? So I think what this is saying through this supporting county, state, and federal legislation, should we be paying attention to that? Or should we not be paying attention to that? It's not saying we're going to support everything that comes before us, no matter what the state or federal initiative is. We're saying, should we be paying attention to it as one of our affordable housing strategies?
You know, if we didn't have the specifics in here, if this was just stated similar to the way C is, we work with other cities to support county, state, and federal legislation and funding to support local housing efforts, I'm fine with that.
I know.
It's when we get into all of these specifics here that I don't know what those are. It's just, we said, I don't know what the impact of those would be. And I think about the level of effort it would take to weigh on these. Do you notice, you know, public comment we'd have to take on it? I just don't think that that's where we want to be. And I don't know that the city council, do they really want that level? Do they want us to look at these and say, yes, you should consider advocating for federal tax credits versus state housing fund versus demolition fees? Is that what they want us to do?
No, no.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Take that out of there.
So I think.
If you notice, yeah.
Go ahead.
You could consider all these Roman numerals to be examples. But, you know, potential things. If you notice across the top, across D, is where we put the Xs and the dots and the check marks. We didn't do that for all the individual things underneath it, because we didn't, we weren't, I guess, anticipating that you were going to debate them at the specific level.
So maybe we could make, I actually did hear clear comment on condominiums, and I did hear clear comment on the tenant protections, number five. But maybe on these others, we could leave the general term D and then put in EG as examples, as the kinds of things they might look for?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
I'm fine with that.
So basically, what you're saying is, in letter D, you'd say intrigued slash watch, and then have those examples, but then have, what were the two priorities, three or four and five? And make those more weighted as a watching item?
Well, state legisla, right, I have answers for those two. So I think what we're saying is, we'll take D in general terms, and then we can put in parentheses, consider such things as, or watch for things like, or something like that? Does that?
I feel more comfortable with that, because it leaves it then up to the regional level and says, what we're going to do is, we're going to look for regional funding to support local needs, and that's all to be determined. We're not, as in the city, we're directing specifically these. Kenmore is going to do these things. Kenmore citizens for these purposes. That makes a distinction that I can make sense of.
Okay.
A comment about D.
I would still want to make clear, we don't support five.
Correct, I have that. Not supporting. Those are the words I've written on this paper. Okay, last one in this section, transportation services, work with providers.
And I'm going to excuse myself.
Yeah, that's all right. See you next time.
Okay, you bet.
I'm intrigued.
I'm very intrigued.
Yes, Mike's intrigued. Yep, vice chair is intrigued.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, so the very last section, I think we can finish it off, if you're willing to go for it. Because A, B, C, D, E, and G, all are monitoring tasks. So it's only data gathering, correct? The one, and reporting. The one exception is F, and that does need attention. But is there any reason that we would not want to support, maybe even if it's a low priority, or maybe these are all watches, because we're already doing it, any of these monitoring items?
Well, it depends on sort of, you know, the city, I mean, if you're talking monitoring, if it's not a large commitment of staff, time, or resources, right?
Right.
Do you want us to wait them? Would it be helpful to wait them?
Not at this point.
So just watch on each one of them?
Yeah, I would do that.
That's what I would recommend.
Okay.
Except for F, which I think is a, it's a different kind of a thing.
So affirmative furthering fair housing is a program of the federal government that is just kind of an evolution of their fair housing monitoring or what sort, auditing they do of agencies that receive funding from HUD. And so the thrust of affirmative furthering fair housing is to make sure that particularly minorities have access to what are called areas of opportunity. And it's not that much in terms of the exercise. It's not a whole lot different than past practices where housing fund recipients had to report what their, you know, how much affordable housing they had, and their racial community composition, and things like that. It also, in the past, has always included some level of monitoring or reporting of what your community does to support or create barriers to affordable housing through your zoning codes and other things. So I don't believe there's a great deal of change in that, but it's just, I think we put it in here to, more than anything, to make you aware that that's something that the staff will probably be called to do, to help with on some level when those reports come up.
So just to clarify, is that so that they comply with the federal recommendations? If they come up with an affordable housing strategy, it has to meet those standards?
What do you mean when you say they?
The city, like if the city council comes up with an affordable housing strategy, it has to fit the affirmative furthering fair housing standards?
It won't be on a, it won't be like every time the city adopts a new ordinance, it won't have to go through some kind of screening. That's not what it means. It means that they'll. It means that they'll, they'll have a list of questions.
Okay.
Does your code do this, 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 or this?
Okay.
And, you know, we'll report back, no, 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 no.
Does our code do it? What, our code, does, can our municipal code?
Right, right.
Sounds just like, what we're saying is, we'll watch.
I think that's fair.
Do you think that's fair? Well, we don't do it, we're not currently doing it, right? So it would be a new program.
It's a variation on an existing program.
Right, but as far as I know, we're not currently doing this.
Right.
So it, it's.
It would start up a new obligation for the city to participate in this.
Correct.
Well, that gets to Mark's question, is, how big is this problem? Is it material enough to devote more city resources to it?
We don't know, because we don't have the data. This would actually give us the data, that might be.
Probably gotta do most of the work for you.
Oh. All right.
I'm on the fence. Anybody else?
Just from listening to what you've talked about as we've gone through this, one thing that you have not had is real specific data on some of this information. And this, again, if it's a smaller program, I'm intrigued, just because we don't have the data, and it might be nice to have the data. Just my perspective.
I, I'm intrigued, but I would like to know just what the level of effort city staff is going to be, what the cost of it is, how it'd be used. I don't know enough about this.
And discrimination's a slightly different issue than affordability.
It's like handicap services, it's sort of like, okay, that's a noble cause, if you want to take that up independently of affordable housing, that's fine, I know there's some overlap, but it's fraught with a lot of other issues.
I mean, if this was data collection. This was data collection and some statistical analysis, that'd be one thing. But if what you're gonna be doing is measuring this against a discrimination standard, which I don't know what that, I agree, that means lots of things to different people. And I'm not sure how useful that would be to us.
Right, go ahead, Mike.
So, but if, if it's, if we get data out of it, statistics that help us understand what the trends are underlying, answer some of our questions, that's fine, but it doesn't sound like that's, that last sentence in there that includes discrimination, gives me a little sense of unease.
That's why I'm sort of like.
Why don't, on this one, why don't we collect more information on what this study actually collects?
What is the, whoever's originating this, what is their purpose in collecting this data?
Cause they want to monitor us, probably.
Well, and part of my problem is.
Or have us self-monitor.
HUD's version of discrimination is somewhat different than the market's version of discrimination. So they, in practice, it becomes a low-income housing advocacy program rather than a pure discrimination on the basis of a protected class status program. I've seen and heard clients say, this is how they're interpreting it, so that I now have to rent to a lower-income family, or I have to keep them there, or I have to keep my rent low, or I have to comply with lots of new regulations.
That's, that would be my concern, at least. If we were to do this, then I think the city then has to understand that it's agreed to buy by whatever standards they're putting up there. We're gonna, we're gonna allow ourselves to be measured by it, we're giving support to it, agreeing that that's what we're gonna strive for. That's a bigger discussion.
Yep.
So we'll bring back some more information on this. What kinds of questions are asked? What is the purpose of the data collection? Is it broader than this and?
I think one other question you should find out is, is there access to federal monies to participate in this? Or is it a precursor to that? Because this would be a very good time for our city to decide how we're gonna handle our problems. Are we gonna, as a community, solve the problems? Or are we gonna look to the federal government for some help? But maybe we don't want to, so finding out.
Strings attached to it.
Exactly, so, you know, finding out more about it, I think will be helpful.
Okay. Well, we had a couple of other things on the agenda, but I think we're not gonna get to those tonight.
Okay.
So that would mean that next time, at the next meeting, we could spend the first part of the evening discussing the criteria that should be used for prioritization. If we can settle, we had hoped to have a, to have checked all the boxes. We're not gonna be at that point. So we'll, maybe what we'll do is identify the criteria, and then we'll run through just a few and see if, if we can begin to sort out priorities. So be thinking about priorities, be thinking about the criteria you think we should be using as we set out the priorities of the list, and that's the next step. And it's probably gonna take the next two, if not the next three meetings.
Thanks, Laurie. And I would again ask, and I think the council would be really interested in this, to the extent we can give them a public, a sense of public feedback to ADUs specifically and density generally, I think they'd like to hear it. As unscientific as it may be, it's still something, go ahead.
I also, because of the people that I met at that dinner.
Right.
I did make some connections, and this would be a good time to kind of feel you guys out. I'm very interested in affordable housing, particularly for the homeless. Not because I wanna make, you know, Kenmore homeless central, but I just think regionally, it's a big issue. So I did make some contact with some, some smaller city mayors and their housing staff, but what are the rules? Can I go talk to them and just ask them my questions that I have? And can I bring that information that I find out back here? Or what's, what's the guideline that you'd give?
Well, you certainly would not be speaking to them as a representative of the planning commission.
Okay.
But as a private citizen, if you have questions and wanna bring back information, it's a little, I, I guess it might be awkward if you were going to speak to the mayors of other communities without the city council being aware.
Okay.
Unless it was really clear that you were a private citizen doing your own.
Okay. Would you recommend that I have a conversation with Mayor Baker before I do that?
That might be useful.
Okay.
And I can certainly ask the city manager about his perspective.
Okay, that'd be great.
On that, I mean, we want to gather as much data as we can, and if, if it's more convenient for you to have questions, have those questions vetted by the planning commission, we can send it out to 10 communities and get some feedback. I mean, that, that's an approach we could, could take without having a single planning commissioner interacting with the mayors of surrounding communities. I don't know if you all have perspectives, but.
Guys?
Sounds like good guidelines.
I think some kind of a request for information, which I think is what you're describing, that would go under the title of the entire planning commission in the city, that, that would be interesting. I'm not sure how much help we would need to put that together, but it could, we could gather some interesting information, I think would be.
So are we saying, let's table this to the next meeting and talk about the scope of a request for information?
If we were gonna do that, I think it would be definitely an agenda item.
Yeah, that's probably wise, do it as a group.
And again, be thinking of it in the context of the strategy plan. So what questions?
Because we're not in the direct assistance area, we're in the indirect, and I'm not, that's a pretty hard connect to make indirect and homelessness.
And, and I would say that what, as a planning commission, what you'd be looking for is, are there, and I'm sure Arch has already done a lot of this work, but are there innovative strategies that aren't on our list for, for the homeless? That we might try to glean from other communities? I think that's what you're saying, Carol.
Yeah, and it's not just homeless, it's people who need affordable housing. You know, they can be marginalized because of disabilities, lack of income. You know, there's lots of reasons people travel through that need for more affordable housing. I mean, I can think about times in my own life where I lived in an ADU, I lived in a, you know, whatever. But, but that, that, that does help me, and I will take a few minutes to talk to, especially the mayor.
Right, and be thinking of questions. Questions. And it may be such a broad question as, we are working on our housing affordability strategy, Arch has provided a lot of background information, there may be, you know, I'm sure you've talked to communities and are aware of the Arch communities, but maybe we want to expand that a little bit? If, if that's what you're really asking for. I mean, not a huge data effort.
No, I don't, I don't think that's my role, it's just, I do have an interest in it.
Yeah.
All right, I think we talk a little more about it next time?
Sure.
Great. And if there, is there any new business? Which we sort of did right then. Any other new business, I should say?
I was just gonna respond to your idea of getting some more public input on A U D. I think that's a good idea. I can imagine this is gonna be controversial.
Right.
So maybe we might even want to think about, is this worthy of a public hearing by itself?
So. So. You're jumping too far. What we're doing with the housing strategy plan is saying, these are the things that we think the city should look at, that maybe these have merit, and these are the things that we prioritize as something we should study. If ADUs is on the list, then the ADU program would come back with specific recommendations. We'd need lots of input. That's the time we'd hold the hearing.
About that, so once we get done prioritizing our strategies, will there be a public hearing about this before we make the recommendations? So all the public hearing stuff will come once the council actually starts working on those priorities.
So the idea would be that the planning commission would recommend a prioritization.
Okay.
You, there's no reason you have to, if you really felt it was important to hold a public hearing, you certainly could. I'm not sure how engaged, great, we had the citizen tonight, who does actually have a perspective. So that's something we could consider. But what you'll do then is recommend the strategies to the city council. They'll agree or disagree with your priorities. Once the priorities are set, then the top priorities presumably will be something that we will take action on. Sometimes that will be council action, sometimes that will be planning commission action. And at that point, certainly, it'd be like any other code amendment or something like that, where we would involve the public.
Okay.
All right, anything else? There being none, I hereby adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.